All right, good evening. You can have a seat. I'm gonna move these over here. Let me ask you to turn in your Bibles to Proverbs, Chapter 16. Proverbs, Chapter 16. We are here for our life-together fellowship. This church asked me to serve as senior pastor in the fall of 2017. And ever since the spring of 2018, I've been serving in that capacity by myself. And ever since the spring of 2018, the life of our church has been characterized by transition, and drama, and all sorts of things. And because of that, it has been important for us to have these kinds of get-togethers. The reason being that I am committed personally, and our church is committed corporately, that Sunday morning, with few exceptions, and short exceptions, Sunday morning is devoted to the worship of the living Christ. We preach the Bible, and sing the Bible, and pray, and engage in life together. But in the midst of all sorts of transition, and drama, and all the rest, there are some times when, as a body of believers, you just gotta come together and kind of pull everybody up in a chair around the kitchen table, and talk about what is going on. And so, I started doing that back in the spring of 2018, just so that we could have some times together regularly for me to talk to you about what is going on, for me to hear from you. That very first one back in the spring of 2018, we had some microphones set up here, and we've set some microphones up at times in the past. Because I think it's important for me to hear from you. I don't know if you've noticed, but there are a lot of people saying a lot of things out there. And I am very interested in being accountable to you. I want to make myself available to you. I'm here when the doors are open. And I want to give you a time with me, one-on-one, whenever we can, and with me, one-on-church, to answer any questions you've got, to address any concerns you've got. I really think my boss is under Jesus Christ, the First Baptist Church of Jacksonville, Florida. I am accountable to you for the work that I do. And I don't know how to be any more accessible, or available, or open myself up, but to just say, hey, if you've got a question, I want you to ask me. If you've got a concern, I want you to bring it up. And I'm gonna do everything I can to try to address that, whether it's one-on-one, or here in front of the Lord and everybody. The two chairs that are up here tonight are to express the wish, that we will get to one of those Q&amp;As at the end of tonight. But I've got a lot I've got to talk to you about. So, no guarantee that I'll get to questions tonight. But if we do not get to questions, and something shows up on social media tomorrow that I'm running from you, it's just, we're just running out of time, okay? And I'll be around here tonight, and you can ask me anything you want to ask me, and I'll try to be as helpful as I can be. But we'll try to get to some questions. It's just more important for me to give you the information that we need to talk about than anything else tonight. The other function of these fellowships is to give us time to spend together. So even in a pandemic, my goodness, it is important for Christians to be together. It is important for us to spend time together, and love one another, and have fun together. And so, we are, we're gonna do a little bit of that tonight when we're through. Proverbs, Chapter 16, is where I want to start. And I want to start with Proverbs, Chapter 16, verse 9. We'll orient our minds around Scripture here at the very beginning, and then I'll dive into some updates, and then God willing, take your questions. Proverbs, Chapter 16, verse 9. "The mind of man plans his way, but the Lord directs his steps." Let's pray. Father, here at the beginning of this time together, I want to express my gratitude to you for First Baptist Church. Even just walking around here tonight, talking with everybody as we gather together, it is a reminder of what a privilege we have to worship together. I have to serve these people. And we have to be a light of Christ in the city of Jacksonville. Father, I thank you for your word that tells us how to think about life, and plans, and your care over us. And Father, I pray that as we talk about this word, and as we talk about your church, you'd give us wisdom, and you'd give us grace, in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, so Proverbs, Chapter 16, verse 9. There is, in this verse, a tension. A tension between human beings, you and I, and a tension between ourselves and the Lord. "The mind of man plans his way." This is a statement of fact, but it's also a statement of commendation. It's good for people to have a plan. It's good for you to have a plan in your house. It's good for you to have a plan with your family. It's good for our church to have plans. It is just a part of wise stewardship that we engage together in planning and evaluating where we are and how we're going to move forward. As true as it is that we need to have our plans, there is a tension here, there's a contrast. "The mind of man plans his way, but..." "...but..." "...the Lord directs his steps." In the midst of human beings who plan their way, God is always directing your steps. It's good for us to have a plan, and it's good for God to direct our steps. And it is wisdom to know when those two things don't match up anymore. It's wisdom to know, hey, here is the plan that I've got, and the direction we're moving in, but God seems to be doing something different, and directing our steps in a little bit of a different way. It is arrogance that refuses to get on board with God's plan when it doesn't agree with your plan. It's sin to do that. It's wisdom and righteousness to go, you know what? I think we need to switch gears here. In 2020, God has taken every single person in a different direction than we had planned. Every single human being is in a different spot right now in 2020 than where they thought they would be. That would always be true. We never get it 100% right. We're always a little bit surprised by what happens, particularly when you're a planner like me. I love plans. I've confessed this to you in the past. If you tell me a problem, my first instinct is to give me a whiteboard and a marker, and I want to start planning something. I love plans. And so, sanctification for me means that I'm regularly learning Proverbs 16:9. That, okay, the whiteboard diagram looked like this, but God's plan looked way different. It's always the case that that's happening. But 2020, guys, come on. 2020 has thrown all of us for a loop in so many ways. None of us are where we thought we would be. It's true for each person. It's true for every church. I mentioned to you last week, as I have just been talking with pastors all over the country, everybody's trying to figure out, what are we doing here? What's the plan? What's the way forward? Everybody is amending and scrapping plans that they had up to this point. It's just different for everybody, and it's different for First Baptist Church. I want to tell you where I thought we would be at this point in 2020, according to the plan in my mind, the plan that I've openly and honestly talked to you about. I thought we'd be in this room right now, but I thought outside of this room, a lot of things would be different. I thought there'd be a hole in the ground across the street. I thought there would be cranes and scaffolding around the Hobson Auditorium. And you can go check on this, none of that is there. It has been delay after delay after delay after delay, and then COVID struck, and it is just entirely different. I thought we would be partway to being able to occupy our new digs in the Hobson Auditorium. My plan was to have us in there the first half of '21. That's where the plan in my mind had us headed. But the Lord has directed our steps entirely differently. We are not close to where I thought we would be. And I want to be a man who's characterized by wisdom. I want to be a pastor who is characterized by wisdom. I want to be just a Christian who's characterized by wisdom. And that means I've got to be wise enough to say, hey, there is a difference between my plan and God's plan. And so, I want to talk with you about that tonight. I want to help you understand where we are and where we're going by just reminding you of how we got where we are. So, for decades, the numbers in our church have been moving in the wrong directions. So, for decades, the attendance at First Baptist Church has declined, and the expenses of First Baptist Church have gone up. You can't live that way. I've tried to be honest with you about that since the earliest days of my service to you. There were a lot of problems that were creating that. Our physical plant, our physical structures and location with deferred maintenance was a tremendous part of that. Personnel has been a tremendous problem with that. We are a church that had hundreds of employees. There are churches, five, I talked with one church in Arizona, 10 times larger than our church, and they have half our employees. So, personnel was a problem, physical plant was a problem, other expenses in the budget that were unnecessary were a problem, just needing to live within our means. And so, I instituted what I have referred to internally as our right-size plan. It's a plan to go through and filter out needless extraneous expense in the budget for which I am incredibly thankful. We've made a lot of progress on. Our executive pastor, Cody Hoskins, has done a remarkable job, and literally recovered thousands of dollars every month that was just being wasted. We went through, in the spring, the hardest thing I've ever done in my life, which was our reduction in force, layoffs on our staff to begin the process of getting our staff into a size that we can afford. That was very painful. I'm thankful. We're on the other side of that now. And the big thing that most folks talked about, that I shared with you on September the 8th last year, was our plan to right-size our physical plan, to move from a million and a half square feet of space that we don't need to roughly 280,000 square feet of space, which we do need and we would fit on. Relocating to that space on the Hobson Block was gonna happen at a cost of about $30 million. The plan that you heard me talk to you about, and that you approved overwhelmingly, was to fund that project initially with a loan, but long-term, over the long term, to fund that loan and the project with property sale. So, we started working on that in earnest as soon as you gave us the go-ahead to do that. One thing I want to let you know about the Hobson Block, and I'm just saying this to you now, just to be really clear, because I would say, the number-one question that I had about relocating to the Hobson Block in the aftermath of September the 8th is why not the LMA? Okay, I thought there'd be a different reaction to that. But why not the LMA? Okay, there you are. All right. So, why not the LMA? I mean, look, it is bigger than the Hobson, and we don't maybe have to do multiple services in there, and why? Why the LMA? Well, I just want to explain to you why for a few minutes. The most important reason, there were a number of reasons, and if anybody's ever interested, they can go back and look at that September the 8th sermon. And I gave 10 reasons why we needed to move to the Hobson Block. Some of them had to do with the LMA, others not. But the main reason is, what made our property so valuable is that it's not just a lot of it, but it's all together. And the reason it's all together is because of this block, the LMA block. It's the LMA block that keeps all of the other pieces of property contiguous. And so, a big buyer who can come in with a big bag of money, who wants to develop a large piece of downtown property, what makes the deal so valuable is the LMA. So, the LMA block takes one deal, and it raises it by potentially $20 million. So, in such a deal, the most valuable piece of property that we have is the LMA. And when we'll fit in the Hobson Block, it doesn't make any sense to stay that way. So, just so you know, it's not as though we did any mini-mani-mo or anything like that, or somebody, we didn't have long conversations about why the LMA, or why not the LMA. It's just that the considered opinion, based on the overall value of the property, we really needed, the value of this property was in its sale, not in its retention. So, that was the plan. I want you to know that the COVID pandemic has changed every bit of that. It has changed every bit of it. The COVID pandemic and the consequent recession that we are in right now has changed all of that. This year, I've said to you several different times that in order to move forward with the project, we were facing two barriers. Barrier number one is we realized we were in a bigger fight than we imagined with the city to get approval to tear that building down. We won that fight, and I am thankful for that. That is important. No matter what happens with that property, that was an important victory for us, because we need to be able to retain the control of our property so that we can do with it what we want to do with it, and not what somebody tells us we have to do with it. So, that was important. The other barrier that I told you about is we had to be sure we could fund the project. And that requires a loan, which we have received permission to get, and it requires a property sale. Well, the property sale is where we have hit a wall, even just within the last couple of weeks, even during these 40 days of prayer that we are culminating with today. In January, we had six or eight large buyers that were interested in our overall piece of property. Partway through the COVID pandemic, all of those people had gone away. All of their interest, these are big fish. They know how to do what they're doing. They know how to invest. They know how long they got to keep it. They know how much money they need to spend. They know how to line up the folks who are gonna be involved in developing that property. And the kind of uncertainty created by a recession makes all of those guys go away. We haven't seen or heard from them in months. But there was still interest in smaller buyers who would buy smaller tracts of land. Well, just within the last few weeks, just within this past month, again, during our 40 days of prayer, we received some offers. We got some information about people who were looking at some pieces of our property. And what they were offering was, it was about 25% of the value of the property we were told we would have in January. About 25% of what we were expecting is the actual offers that we got. So, several weeks ago, when I received that information, I realized we're up against a wall we can't get over. I cannot, and you would laugh at me if I tried, ask you to sell our property for a figure that is 25% of what we think it's worth, not in a recession, when we would be counting on that to clear the decks on a loan and put ministry money in the bank. I just can't do it. The logic for taking out a loan is that the loan gets cleared off when the property is gonna be sold. If the property can't be sold right now, or it has to be sold at fire sale level, I am not, as the pastor of this church, gonna commit us to a long-term loan that could sink us. So... So, because of the change in the real estate market brought on by the COVID recession, I want to let you know very clearly that the Hobson Block plan is over. We're not talking about that anymore. So, that's the big announcement. And I want to let you know that I am actually really excited about that. I'm really excited about that, because I want to be able to admit it when my plan is over here, and God's plan is over here. And the best way I know when my plan is over here, and God's plan is over here, is if the only way to get my plan is to make stupid financial decisions that could place us in jeopardy, I'm just not gonna do that, and I know you don't want to do that either. So, let me tell you about the new plan. I would tell you, I think this is God's plan, but it's 2020, and you can't be too careful. So, here is the new plan. Welcome home. Okay. You are sitting in the new plan. Well, okay, we'll let you get that out of your system. You can clap. We'll call it the LMA plan. There are a lot of, in the providence of God, a lot of things have come together to make this workable in a way that it wasn't workable before. So, as I mentioned, we needed to sell this property when it was gonna add value of tens of millions of dollars to the overall deal. But those people who would buy that property, they're not interested anymore. So, the value of the LMA moves from its resale value to its retention. We can be in here, all of us can fit. There is space for each one of us. The other thing is, we have, because of our preparation to move in to the Hobson Auditorium for construction, because of all the moving parts to get us consolidated, to clear out that block, we actually now are on a footprint that we can afford in terms of physical space. So, here's what I want you to know. We are in a place that we can afford, in a place that we like, in a place that is functional. We got here trying to do something else, but we're right where the Lord wants us to be. And honestly, I'm standing in front of you saying that even in a pandemic, with all the constriction and change and weirdness, I've been at First Baptist Church for five years, and for the first time since I've been here, we are living within our means. We have got staff that we can afford. We have got property that we can afford. And you, because of God's grace in your life, because of your generosity, are funding that. And I want you to know that we have been incredibly disciplined as a leadership team. We have trimmed the sales. There's been pain in that. Everybody likes to, nobody wants to constrict, but that's what you've got to do to live within your means sometimes. And for the first time, we are in affordable, usable space. Now, one reason that the LMA had its problems when we were considering all of our plans before is this space does need work. Several years ago, there was a lot of work done in here. Most of that was aesthetic, and didn't deal with a lot of the structure and the systems of the building, which need a lot of work. But here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna take that as it comes. And I also want you to know that as it started becoming clear to me some time ago, that this is where we were headed, I started talking with some of you in our congregation, and telling you what I thought was going on, and what some of the work would need to be done if we were gonna make it in the LMA, if we were gonna seal up the building so that we stop some of the water intrusion, and we've got air conditioning problems, which in a building this size is very expensive. We got to get some stuff ready for choir and orchestra back here that's not in place. Okay. That is all very expensive work. And as I've been talking with some of you in this room, already, a small group of people have already committed an amount of money in the millions to do that work. We're not as far down the road as we need to be, but there are generous, gracious people in our church who've committed millions to do the work structurally so that this building can be sealed up, and safe, and a happy place for us to be. And I'm very, very thankful for that. We still have some more work that needs to be done. If you would like to participate in that, I want you to come to me and talk to me about that. I'm gonna tell you what we need, and how you can help. But I'm not gonna stand up here tonight and announce some other big building program, or some big fundraising deal, because honestly, we need to focus on other things right now. And I'm gonna talk about that in a minute. But let me, before I talk about that, those of you who've had a lot of conversations with me about this over the last several weeks, you've heard me talk about Proverbs, Chapter 16, verse 9, and the difference between our plans and God's plans, and the wisdom of getting on board with the Lord's plans. And I don't know how this grabs you when I stand in front of you and tell you that the plan we've been working for isn't gonna happen. I don't know how you feel about that. And so, what I want to do is just talk to you for a few minutes about some good things that God is doing in changing our plans. I just want to give you a handful of good things that the Lord is up to as he changes our plans, in case you're discouraged. If you're happy about this, and this is where you wanted to be all along, then you can go look online for a few minutes, or pass a note to your sweetheart. But if you're going, man, I was so excited about the direction we're headed, and now he's standing up there saying we're not gonna do that anymore. Let me give you a few good things the Lord's been doing. The main reason Proverbs 16:9 is in the Bible is to help us trust Him, and not ourselves. We need, it's a good thing when we have a plan that God changes, derails, shifts, modifies, or else you start to think, I'll trust that guy, or I'll trust my plans, instead of the Lord. And so, because the Lord loves us, He is kind when He looks at our plans and says, no, we're not gonna do that. We're not gonna do that right now. We're not gonna do that that way. And it's a good thing to trust the Lord. The second good thing, as I've thought about this, that the Lord is doing, is He is helping us to trust each other. Let me explain what I mean by that. I have known since, I've known for a long time, I've known for years, that First Baptist Church could not continue to exist when attendance goes down and expenses go up. I won't repeat the story, but I've told you the story in the past of when I realized that these numbers are moving in the wrong direction, and when they cross, we're in trouble. And on September the 8th, I leveled with you about that. Every fact that I gave you on September the 8th is still true. The plan, God is modifying that. But everything that was true about our financial situation on September the 8th, that was just a fact. And I realized that as the pastor of this church, I needed to see if you were willing to fight for this church. It wasn't some big test. I wasn't playing a game with you. But I knew on September the 8th last fall that we were making a decision about whether we were going to be committed to maintaining ourselves as a vibrant ministry in this church, or we're gonna let ourselves just slowly die. And all but just a handful of people, thousands of people in the room that morning stood up and said, we are gonna fight to do what it takes. "We are going to fight to do what it takes to have a vibrant ministry in this city." And whatever love and respect I had before only increased on September the 8th. I needed to trust you, that you were willing to do whatever it takes. On the other side, you needed to trust me. You needed to trust me. The number one comment, apart from why not the LMA, the number one comment that I heard after September the 8th, which I still hear from some of you even today, is, "I am so thankful that you told us the truth." So many of you, I mean hundreds of you, came up to me and said, "For years, I have been watching this thing take on water. And I wondered, is anybody going to stand up and tell us the way it is? And you told us the way it is, and I'm grateful for that." And so you needed to know if you can trust me. There's a different kind of test in that regard tonight. When the plan isn't working, my plan isn't working, well, I stand up in front of you and level with you. And there's very real sense in which I don't want to be doing this right now. I wish I could be like, "Hey, seven more months, we'll be there." But that's not what's happening, that's not what the Lord's doing, and I got to be honest with you and tell you that. And I hope that that encourages you to trust me. A third, a third good thing that the Lord is doing is honestly humbling me. It is so humbling to love a place and want to help and ask for wisdom and talk to smart people, talk to contractors and church planners and designers all over the country, talk to the best people you can come up with. And everybody looks around the room and they go, "This is the plan." And one of those people is the one who has to stand in front of everybody and say, "Hey, guess what? Here's the plan." It's humbling for me to stand in front of you and say, "Guys, the plan didn't work." I'd rather say, "The plan worked. Somebody give me the Welch's sparkling cider and let's crack it on the side of the building and move in." But that's not the truth. And so, it is important for me, if I, if I love you and I'm committed to you, if I love Jesus and I'm committed to Jesus, I can't just say, "Hey, the stuff that we were doing before I got here wasn't working." I also have to stand in front of you, like tonight, and say, "The stuff we've been doing since I got here wasn't working." So I'm trusting that the Lord opposes the proud and gives grace to the humble, and it's good when He teaches me that my plan didn't work. He's been focusing us. He's been focusing us. All of these things teach us that what matters is not buildings and bricks and plumbing, but what matters is the gospel of Jesus Christ. The, the LMA Plan that we've got, and whatever happens in the next 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years if Jesus doesn't come back, whatever happens in the decades ahead, people, if in 2080, are going to be trying to figure out how to deal with whatever the problems they're facing then. Buildings and programs and all these things change, but it's the gospel that remains the same. And the most important thing that we're going to do is focus on Jesus and, and a, a plan that doesn't work and helps us do that. And then the last thing, the good thing, is God has been preparing us. It's like I said to you. The plans that we were making to move everybody out of where they were into new space, we thought we were doing that to make room for demolition and construction. Well, now, in the providence of God, we know that actually what that movement was about was about moving us onto space that we can afford, and God never intended for us to be anywhere else. And so, it's like I said a few moments ago, for the first time, we're living within our means, and that's because of your flexibility and your patience as we've been moving you around. And that is a really, really good thing. And so, what are we going to focus on? Last fall, the big burden that I felt was, if we are going to be true to Jesus Christ, if we are going to be a church that is going to be an effective proclaimer of the gospel in Jacksonville, we've got to stop making decisions that are, that are making us broke. And my great burden last fall is that we might not have the ability to do that. My great burden coming into the fall of 2020 is not that. My, my great burden now is that we will be distracted by so many things that we will forget what it is to focus on what actual real church is, on what actual real gospel ministry is. And so it is so important to me, I, I don't want to tell you, I know how much it's going to cost to, to seal up the building and fix the HVAC, and I know how much has been committed, and I know how much we yet need, but I'm just telling you, I don't want to stand in front of you and tell you that tonight. Because I don't want you to think that the big thing is fundraisers and buildings and air conditioners. Because my, what my burden, what I think the threat is tonight is that we'll be distracted with everything everybody's saying, everything everybody's hearing, what's going to happen with that building that I love, what's going to happen with that style of music that I love, and we'll forget that church isn't about buildings at all. It's about our sharing Christ and loving Christ and worshiping Christ. And so I want to, the most important thing I want to do tonight is not tell you that the Hobson Plan is in the rearview mirror now. The most important thing I want to do tonight is to ask all of us to take a load off. Whatever has been our concern about a building, whatever has been our concern about where things are going to go and where things are going to be, whatever has been our concern about the kind of music we're going to sing, or what in the world, the pastor, did you hear what, did he really do that? Did you see what I saw? Like, all of those things, I want you to take a load off. I, I want us to stop. And what I am praying for is a season in the life of our church where we could just focus on being the church. If we could just experience the joy and the happiness and the peace and the life and the light of just being the people that God has called us to be. We identify that at First Baptist with five things. So I'm asking you in the next season to cool your jets. And if you're going to get fired up, to get fired up about five things. About worshiping Jesus Christ, about serving this church in Jesus's name, about sharing Jesus with people in our community who don't know Him. I want you to get fired up about making financial investments in this church. Not because there's some special offering or something we got to do, but just because out of the overflow of the love that Jesus has for you, out of an acknowledgement that He's given you everything, that you would reinvest some of what He's given you, and that you would make it your ambition to grow in Jesus. Don't you know, some of you have been Christians longer than I've been alive. Don't you know if we could just focus on those five things, that the Lord Himself would take care of all the rest? Don't you think that in a season where nobody knows what is going on, don't you think in a season where no church is ever again going to be the way it was in March, don't you think our church just needs to focus on Jesus and worship and growing and serving and sharing and investing? So I, I want to plead with you for a remarkable season of growth in the life of our church. I want you to listen to 1 Corinthians, Chapter 3, Verses 7 to 9. 1 Corinthians, Chapter 3, Verses 7 to 9. "So then neither the one who plants nor the one who waters is anything." There's a competition in Corinth. Some say, "I follow Paul." Some say, "I follow Apollos." Who do you follow? Who's your favorite minister? Who's the preacher that you're behind? And the Apostle Paul says, "Don't do that." Look, I'll take my straight shooting out for a spin here for just a second. A lot of the trouble, most of the trouble that we've dealt with at First Baptist Church is everybody sinfully trying to figure out who they follow. Here's the thing. I'm going to say something, I'm going to be real clear. You have never heard me say, behind this pulpit, you have never heard me make any public suggestion that any minister of the gospel is no good. You've never heard, you've never heard me critique anybody, and you won't. I don't do that. I want to ask you not to do that. I, I, I don't want you to look at the pastors that are here or any pastor that's not here and talk about which one you like or don't like, which one you follow or don't follow, which one caused the problems or which one solved them. Don't do that for me. Look, neither the one who plants nor the one who waters is anything. What that means is that I am nobody. It's not, it's not false humility, I'm just agreeing with the Bible. You're supposed to fire me if I don't agree with the Bible. I'm nothing. If, if, if you heard people say bad things about me, just agree that it's true. Just agree that it's true. My joke is that Facebook is that place where that confesses all the sins I've never committed and none of the sins that I have. I'm just glad nobody's figured out what I'm really up to. My goodness, then I'd really be in trouble. All you got to do is talk to Lauren, she's sitting right here. Worst fact checker in the world. If, if people say, "The pastor's no good," it's true. I'm a sinner. I don't have what it takes. My plans are garbage. They're nothing compared to the Lord. Neither the one who plants nor the one who waters is anything but God who causes the growth. Why don't you stand up on the phone with somebody? Why don't you stand up and defend yourself against all this? Seems like a lie. Seems like maybe you are lying when you don't stand up and say this. Why don't you stand up and do it? Because I'm nothing. What matters is God who gives the growth. It's my job to talk to you about Jesus, not Heath Lambert. The, the problem isn't, "Why don't you do this? Why don't you do that?" The problem is, what are we doing trying to figure out who we follow anyway, except Jesus Christ? "So then neither the one who plants nor the one who waters is anything but God who causes the growth." Now, "He who plants and he who waters are one, but each will receive his own reward according to his own labor." That's the Lord who does that, so we'll let Him sort it all out. Listen to this. "For we are God's fellow workers. You are God's field, God's building, you. You are God's building. It is my job to build this building. Under the grace of Jesus Christ, it is my job to build you." And so, the First Baptist Church Plan is that we need to be under construction. We need to grow. We need to love. We need to worship. We need to serve. We need to invest. The, the cranes and the demolition are over our hearts, not city blocks in downtown Jacksonville. So we're going to focus on building this church for a while. We'll fix what needs fixing, just like you do at your house. If there's a leak in the roof, we'll send somebody up there and cover it with something. And we'll, we'll fix what needs fixing. We will take care of faithfulness and let the Lord take care of the rest. All right. Let me give you a couple of, of other announcements in our remaining minutes here that, that aren't as big as all of that, but are important nonetheless. A few financial updates about where we are in the life of our church. When, when this whole thing first started, the COVID deal and quarantine and all that, my concern was more about the global economy and the church economy than it was about almost anything else. I was concerned about a number of things, but I'm going, "Oh my goodness, everybody's going to lose their job, we're going to have families hurting and in pain. The church is going to be hurting and in pain." And as far as the, the church budget is concerned, the recession that we're currently in could have been devastating. The, the first thing that I did, as you know, is we instituted a spending freeze and a hiring freeze. We drastically cut the budget that we were working on for this budgetary year that we're living in now. The good news is, we were, we had gone a long way to prepare for those cuts because we'd already been right sizing our budget. We'd been going through the budget and taking out needless spending that had been there for a long time. We went through a painful but necessary reduction in force. If we'd gone into the recession with all of the employees that we had before, we would be in desperate shape right now. And so the Lord was taking care of us preemptively in that. You have been faithful to give. Just so you know, one of the early things that we did was we set and we made various firewalls. When giving dips below this number, we're going to have to cut these expenses. And when giving dips below the next level, we're going to have to cut those next level expenses. And those start to get real painful real quick. That starts to get into personnel. We have never hit the first firewall. You have been faithful to give all through this, and I'm very, very grateful. We are, we're holding our own and we're continuing to make investments. The budget that you approved for this fiscal year has the first real increase in missions giving. It's a 1% increase, the first real increase in missions giving in a very long time. And our plan is to increase that every year until 10% of our overall church budget, it goes to missions. That is our heartbeat, and we want to communicate that with our financial commitments. We, we also were able, for the first time in 13 years, to give every employee a raise. Our, the, those wrong numbers that I talked about, where attendance going down and expenses going up, our employees weathered that by not receiving a raise for over a decade. They got the, the first raise they've had in 13 years. Only member of this, members of the staff that didn't get raises were me and folks that I've hired since I've been here. But the folks who have weathered the storm over the last little while got, got their first raise in a while, and that's, that's the budget that you approved. We need you to serve. I said that we're going to focus on being a church, and that means we need you to serve. We're, we're not asking you for $30 million, we're just asking you for your time. We are going to be having our next generation and children's ministry returning here in the next couple of weeks, more on that in a moment. We have got people coming in here, visitors that don't know where they're going. We've got people who've been here for a long time that don't know where they're going because of all these signs and all this tape. We need you to serve. Please, please pray and ask God where He wants you to serve, not whether. He already wants you to serve, that's your job as a Christian, but ask Him where He wants you to serve. And then visit us at fbcjacks.com/serv to begin the conversation about where that would be. We're going to have Kingdom Kids. We're going to have Kingdom Kids resuming in September, and I want to talk to you about our student ministry. In the next few weeks, not quite, not quite ready tonight, but in the next few weeks, we will be announcing five new hires for our student ministry. This is part of the budget, again, that you approved, so this money is provided for in the budget that you committed to. And I want you to know that this underlines the significance of student ministry for us at First Baptist Church. If we're going to reach all of Jacksonville with all of Jesus for all of life, we have to reach students and children, and we are going to make significant staff commitment to that in the weeks ahead. We're going to preserve, just one of those little rumors that I hear that I don't mind correcting in front of her, I don't correct many of them, but I don't mind correcting this one, is everybody's been saying that we're going to get rid of independent high school and middle school ministry, and that's not true. We're preserving high school ministry, we're preserving middle school ministry, and we'll have hires to talk with you about in the next few weeks on that. We will be using a little bit of a different staffing model, but more on that later. And next generation, which includes children and students, all those ministries will be returning after Labor Day. So we've been monitoring the COVID situation, our attendance has been steadily increasing, and we're going to be ready to return to student and children's ministry after Labor Day. So that's coming up before you know it. Dwight Eisenhower. When he was asked by George Marshall to draw up the first plans for the invasion of France in World War II, the first timeline had the Allies invading France in 1942. As they got planning, got working, and sorting out the details, they realized it wasn't going to be 1942, it was going to be 1943. So they pushed it back to 1943. And then as they got planning and got working and details slipped into place, they realized it wasn't going to be 1943, it was going to be May of 1944. And they got planning and they got working and they realized it wasn't going to be May of 1944, it was going to be June the 5th of 1944. And then a storm came, and they said, you know what, it's going to be on June 6th of 1944. And that's what happened. The invasion of Normandy happened on June 6th, 1945, which was not the first plan, and it wasn't the second plan, and it wasn't the third plan or the fourth plan, it was like the fifth or the sixth plan. General Eisenhower was quoted as saying, "Plans are nothing, but planning is everything." Proverbs 16:9, you got to tweak that a little bit and say, "Plans are nothing, but the planner is everything." Look, when things don't go the way you want them to go, you got to remember what you're trying to do. What they were trying to do in what turned out to be 1944 is win a war. And they realized if we go with our first or second or third stupid plan, we might be able to check that off the list, but we won't win this war. Well, what is our goal? Psalm 102, verse 18. "This will be written for the generation to come, that a people yet to be created may praise the Lord." I don't know what all the right plans are. But it is crystal clear to me that the Lord has brought me to First Baptist Church at a time of transition, at a time of tumult, to serve, to preach the gospel, to shepherd this flock, and do whatever it takes that a people yet to be created would praise the Lord. You look through 182 years of history of this church, and every 20, 30, 40 years, First Baptist Church really gets up against the wall. In 1901, the Great Fire wipes out the church, and there's no building, there's no place to, forget about HVAC, there's no building. And it seems like it's over. And boy, that was a nice church that was there in Jacksonville for a little while, except it wasn't over. The richest years of ministry were ahead, as they got on the other side of the pain and the other side of the difficulty, and they rebuilt and they planted churches all across the city, and they grew from nothing to hundreds. And then the 20s and the 30s were tough, and they got broke. And in 1940, they're the brokest church in the Southern Baptist Convention, and they'd had to pay for at least one building two times and then still load on it. And you could have said, well, that was a nice church there for a little while. They made it 100 years, that First Baptist Church, and but now it's over. Except it wasn't over. And just like in 1901, in 1940, you wouldn't have known it then with all the pain and the turmoil and the conflict, but the richest years of ministry were still in the future. And now, here we are in 2020. And 2020's been a hard year, and First Baptist Church will never be the same. When we were all here together on March the 8th, 2020, we didn't know what we were participating in. But within just a few days, a global pandemic would come in, and it would reshape the whole church world all across the country, all across the world. And every week, this thing goes on. I'm aware, it settles in just a little more clearly how much has changed. And you could say, well, that was a nice run First Baptist had, made it 182 years. Wasn't that great? But it wasn't over before, and it's not over today. We look back at 1901, and we are so thankful for those pastors and those people that fought through the hard times so that a generation yet to be created would praise the Lord, and thousands did. We're so glad they didn't roll it up and go home. We look back at 1940 at a broke church with a pastor that was attacked left and right. I heard him preach this week on a recording. Facebook will say I had a séance or something like that, it was a recording. Heard him preach on a recording that he met so much resistance and so much difficulty, and he just prayed that the Lord would make the path straight, and he said, "I did a lot of funerals that year." And we look back at 1940, and we're so thankful for those pastors and those people that didn't roll it up and go home, but they were faithful so that a generation yet to be created would know the Lord, and thousands did. Some of you in here know Jesus Christ because they didn't quit. Well, 2020's our year. 2020 is our time. 2020 is the year like 1901 and like 1940, when if Jesus doesn't return, people in 2080 are going to be sitting at the First Baptist Church looking back at you from 2020. And they're going to say, "I'm so glad they didn't give up. I'm so glad they stayed faithful. I'm so glad they preached Jesus Christ." This is the First Baptist Church of Jacksonville, Florida. And the most important word in that title is church. We're the bride of Jesus Christ. We are the body of the Son of God who is risen in power and sits on a throne, praying for us as we speak. Churches don't die. Because we've got a Savior who doesn't die. Churches live and grow, and we will grow in our commitment to preaching Christ in this city. We will grow in our worship of Jesus Christ. We will grow in our investment. And when it's all over, a generation that doesn't even exist yet, we'll sing praises to the Lord because of our faithfulness today. Let's stand and let's pray. Father in heaven, I'm thankful for the First Baptist Church of Jacksonville, Florida. What a privilege we have to be here together. What a privilege we have to love and serve Jesus in this body. Father, I pray that you would watch over us. I pray that you would take care of us. I pray that you would grow your church, that we would understand that the building that matters is the building of our bodies united together in love, worshiping, serving, sharing, investing, and growing in Jesus. Father, I pray that anybody who's been upset, you'd take care of that, and that you'd help them to speak loudly for Jesus. I pray that anybody who's been happy would stay that way and talk about Jesus. Father, I pray that any spirit of division or factions would go away, and there wouldn't be any, "I follow Paul," "I follow Apollos." There'd just be Jesus. And anybody who's talking about Jesus is friends with me. And so, Father, help us grow our church, make us faithful. Life is too short. Compromise is everywhere, and so many churches, churches that shock me, it's everywhere. And so, sure up, First Baptists, grow us in our commitment to the Bible, grow us in our commitment to Jesus and His gospel. Grow us in our love for one another. Because we overflow with your love for us. Father, we pray it in Jesus's name. Amen. All right. I don't know what we're supposed to do next, we were going to do questions, but it's past time for that. What? We should sing, we should sing. Let's sing Amazing Grace. Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me. I once was lost, but now I am found, was blind, but now I see. Grace be with you all.